Everybody, I want to welcome you to the third installment of eight meetings, public meetings being held on the development of the Durham Police Department's Real-Time Crime Center. Specifically, our focus of conversation tonight will be around our Phase One, which is the integration of Peregrin into the Real-Time Crime Center. And so before we start, just wanna just say that this is an open conversation. We want to be able to answer any questions that you all might have. And we want to be able to speak to each other with respect and in a civil way. And so there's just a few rules in virtual. The virtual environment is a little bit more difficult, but we're going to get through it. So you will have two ways in which to ask your question. We do have staff that are doing some moderating on this end. So you can enter your question in the chat feature, or you can raise your virtual hand and staff will select you as I call you, and I can see you on the screen. And then finally, just a caution to please mute your microphone when you are not speaking. It just helps us be able to hear the main presenter or the main speaker, and also any disruptions. So we want to make sure that our meeting is moving forward in a positive and progressive way. And any disruptions will be removed from the overall Zoom. And then finally, just please, just let's make this a time to get to know each other, get to know our speakers, but also get to know the software and how we hope to be able to use it within the city of Durham. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to take a moment to have City of Durham staff introduce themselves. I'll call them one by one so that you can maybe put faces to names and you know who does what within the organization. Many of the folks that will be on this call are involved and have been involved in the Real-Time Crime Center discussion, the committee. And they've been doing this work for nearly a year now, just developing the Real-Time Crime Center and the structure. And then finally, I will provide an opportunity for Mr. Tim Schreiber. He is with Peregrin to come on and really get us into the topic of the evening. So my name is Patrice Andrews, and I am your Chief of Police. And then I will select Deputy Chief Clancy.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark Clancy. I am the Deputy Chief for Administrative Services Bureau.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Chief Jermaine Jackson.
He is on another meeting as well, ma'am, so he may not be able to.
Double duty. Right now. No, that's fine. So another deputy chief that's on the call is Jermaine Jackson. He is the Deputy Chief over Field Operations. And I will skip to, you just heard her speaking, Assistant Chief Ronell Campbell.
Good afternoon. My name is Ronell Campbell. I'm Assistant Chief over Field Operations, Zone A. I'm also a member of the Real-Time Crime Center Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Assistant Chief Dave Pyatt.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Dave Pyatt, Assistant Chief for the Investigative Services Bureau, Durham Police Department. That includes Criminal Investigations, Vice Narcotics, Forensics, Property and Evidence.
Thank you, sir. And I'm kind of scanning around. I see, let's see, it looks like I see Captain Dan Cuscha.
Hello, Captain Dan Cuscha. I'm over Criminal Investigations and on the RTCC chair. Thank you.
And I believe Assistant Chief Raoul Garcia.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Raoul Garcia, Assistant Chief over Field Operations.
Thank you, sir. And then, let's see here, if I've missed anybody, please forgive me. Then Mr. Jason Shees.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jason Shees, Analytical Services Manager for the Police Department.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chris Buseck.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Buseck. I'm the IT Director, and I'm on the RTCC Working Group.
Thank you, sir. And from my team, I've got Lieutenant Jose Montoya. He is not Alicia, but he's using her camera.
Yeah, we're sharing the camera. Good afternoon, everybody. Lieutenant Jose Montoya, Public Affairs.
Thank you. And I've had some other folks on. So on the other side of the room with me in the room is Captain Randall Packard. He's Captain of Public Affairs Unit here in the Office of the Chief. And then I have Public Affairs folks that are also on. It's Alicia Banks.
Hi, I'm Alicia Banks, and I'm with the Public Affairs Unit for Durham Police.
Perfect. And we're going to be switching over. I believe that I see staff from TS. Mr. Raven, I'll start with you, sir.
Sergeant Raven, Chief Dad Officer and Assistant Director of Technology Solutions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody? For some reason, I'm not seeing all the names. Is there anybody from your T? Yes.
Dave. I'll go next. Mitch Smith, Project Management Office Manager with Technology Solutions.
Perfect, thank you. Do I see Angelica? Yes, there she is.
Hi, everyone. I'm Angelica Russell, the Strategic Planning and AI Readiness Analyst with Technology Solutions.
All right. Do I have anyone else from TS or TS Partners on?
That is it.
Perfect, perfect, thank you. And then I just want to transition over to Deputy Chief, I'm sorry, Deputy City Manager. I'm making you sworn, and you're still a Deputy City Manager, Keith Chadwell.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Deputy City Manager Keith Chadwell. And to the members of the community, the public, welcome and thank you for joining us.
Thank you, sir. And then I want to introduce Mr. Tim Schreiber. Tim is with Peregrin, and I will turn the meeting over to him.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you all for attending this evening's conversation. My name is Tim Schreiber. I lead our state and local government business here at Peregrin Technologies. And one of the great gifts of getting to be a part of these meetings is getting to be down here in Durham for a couple of weeks. I'm right now in an office over by Old North Durham Park, but I'm really enjoying spending time with you all in the city these couple of weeks, these meetings, and looking forward to the conversation this afternoon.
Thank you. So I just want to just start out in giving you a little bit of context. I'll be brief. So the Durham Police Department, as you, most of you know that are on this call, you know, we've had to be very creative in making up for some of our staffing difficulties. As we are now starting to see larger academies, our staffing numbers are increasing, but we still have had to find ways, innovative ways, in which to fill some of the void. And what we have learned from just across the country, but also locally in this region, is that there are several law enforcement agencies that operate in some way or the other, real-time crime centers. And those centers really do provide a force multiplier in the way that it helps with our investigations, but it also helps our responders when they are responding to various calls across the city. So it helps with quicker connections between, you know, figuring out the in-progress calls. So if you have a gunshot wound or any other type of violent call, it will help facilitate the connection between having witnesses that say there's a person that they saw kind of commit this or a person in the area. And it helps us better be able to investigate those calls and those incidents quicker. And whereas our investigators, generally, we receive a call, we'll take a report, and then that report will go to an investigator, and investigator will go and conduct a canvas with other investigators. So it can be several, several days of just gathering information and evidence in order to be able to really identify a person of interest or really know who actually committed the crime. And so it's important for us that, you know, as our call volume grows and our need to be able to solve these crimes that are occurring and are violent crime, it's important for us to be able to find ways in which we can continue to serve you all as a community at the high level that you are accustomed to and at the level that we are accustomed to providing. And so that was kind of the idea of developing the Real-Time Crime Center. We have done, this committee has done a lot of work around really going and seeing what other agencies are doing and how they are using information that they have learned during just having the Real-Time Crime Center, but also lessons learned along the way. And so that has been extremely helpful for us as we move forward. And so tonight is just an opportunity for you all to ask us questions, both with Tim, but also ask me questions. And any one of my team members, you'll hear me just referring to them from time to time to provide further information so that we can provide you with the answers. Also, TS is on the call as well, our Technology Solutions. They will be happy to answer also any security questions that you may have as it relates to the city's overall security policy with various software that we use. So having said that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Tim. Tim, can you provide just some, a little bit about yourself and about Peregrin? And maybe just about the company's founder, Nick Noon. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. As I said before, thank you for the opportunity to have this conversation. I've really enjoyed the last two evenings here in town and look forward to this conversation as well. And to step back, you know, Peregrin, we're really excited to be a part of this conversation. I think as a company, we, you know, we work in about 300 communities around the country. And I think, you know, we really appreciate communities who take seriously these questions around the decisions their law enforcement agency is going to make, their city is going to make, the investments, and to really stress test them. And so I think like as a company, we're really excited to be a part of this. I think on a personal level, you know, the chief asked me to give a little bit of my background. You know, really personally motivated by the conversation that I'm getting to have here with you all in this couple of weeks in Durham. I started my career in the nonprofit space, did youth leadership, youth development work in high schools for a while, and then led a nonprofit that did organizational capacity building for all types of social service organizations, schools, hospitals, homeless shelters. And then found myself in law school a little bit later in my career, with every intent to go work in the criminal justice system as a prosecutor, a public defender. And two things changed that path. One, I tried being a lawyer, and turns out I actually didn't want to be a lawyer. Sorry to all the lawyers in the room. But secondly, I got a chance to study under a researcher. It was one of the leading researchers on policing policy. And I spent two years studying policing policy. And I spent a summer, you know, working, I spent some time working at the Department of Justice in the Civil Rights Division, really focused on what does the future of policing in our country look like? And what does the future of law enforcement look like? And the, you know, my mentor, the researcher I worked for, you know, one of the things she was always focused on is how do we make policing more effective while reducing the harms of policing? Because there are harms that can come. And I think, you know, what happened for me personally is I got a bit disillusioned with the ability of the federal government to effectively shape the future of policing. And the last place I thought I'd end up was a technology company, but I met Peregrin, I met the founder, Nick, one of the co-founders. And I can tell you a little bit more about the company. But what I was really compelled by is that, you know, a piece of software that could help departments take all the information they have and be more precise in how they use that information to address public safety issues quickly and effectively and confidently, while reducing the footprint, you know, perhaps the breadth that police need to go to find those needles in the haystack, as well as to be able to support transparency efforts. And I think, you know, in Chief Andrews and DPD, you know, you all in here in Durham have a department that's really dedicated to being transparent. But what I found again and again is that chiefs actually struggle to be as transparent as they want to be, because sometimes it's really hard to get the information collated, prepared, and out the door. And so all of those things really drew me to Peregrin in the first place, and I've been here for three and a half years. The company's been around for eight years. And as I said, we work in about 300 communities around the country. And the core problem that we're built to solve is that agencies of all kinds, we work across fire, rescue, emergency management, courts, DAs, alternative and co-response groups, but especially in law enforcement where we started. You have an abundance of information being collected, recorded, put in different places. Everything from handwritten notes on a citation to cloud softwares that are recording 911 calls, recording arrest information. And it becomes really hard to make use of that data to respond to a 911 call, to solve a crime, to report out to the public, to create a crime strategy plan, when all that information is fragmented. And so what Peregrin does is fuses that data together, data that a department already has but isn't able to make full use of, brings that data together, and makes it really easy for department, you know, personnel of all kinds across the department to use that information in a secure, highly permissioned way that keeps that data protected, but gives the information needed to solve hard problems. And so just to give you a couple of examples, just a few weeks ago, there was a child abduction case, one of our departments up in Virginia. And because of Peregrin connecting information from a person to a car, to a 911 call, we're able to stop that person and find the person responsible within a handful of minutes. And that could have been hours, weeks, or never could have been found. You know, so these are like crimes in progress that we address, all the way to things like we had a child who had crawled out the window of her house. And she was a child with a disability and ended up in the middle of the night in an intersection. And a police officer would luckily have found her, thanks to a 911 call, but couldn't find out where she lived, but used Peregrin to combine data from previous 911 calls, from records, to be able to know who that child was and be able to return her to her mother. So there's just two very concrete examples of how, when information is effectively brought together, you can solve really hard, important problems when it comes to response. And I can give you more examples over the course of the conversation, but everything, you know, again, all the way to solving really complex gang-driven homicides and violent crime, to supporting chiefs and, you know, running analytics. They need to understand where they put resources, when they use overtime, when they hire more police officers. So there's a wide range of ways Peregrin gets used. But at the core of it is how do we take the information you already have, bring it together, and make it more useful so that a police department can better serve their community? And that's what we're really excited to be here today to talk more about, answer any questions you may have, hear any concerns, hear any ideas. And so just to wrap, you know, we're really excited to be a part of the conversation. I'm grateful for the chance to be here alongside the Durham team. And I'll just say, I appreciate the welcome I've received and would love to open the floor to any questions that you all may have.
All right. We will now move into the question and answer session. So we will open up the floor.
And for those of you who weren't here right at the beginning when Chief announced it, you can either raise your hand, we can call on you, or you can drop it in the chat, and it can be asked on your behalf.
All right. So maybe what I will do is, do we have anybody raised their hand? Okay, so maybe I'll just maybe lob some questions, some questions that we had heard throughout the course of the last couple of days. And it's all, you know, just very informative conversations that we've had. So there's been concern around just security. So what does the security look like? So can another entity come in and take information from either through Peregrin? Does Peregrin store information? How does all of that information, how does that work?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Yeah, it's been a good question we've received a couple of times. So what's really important to know is that all the information that comes into Peregrin to be made useful belongs to the city of Durham, will always belong to the city of Durham. And that seems obvious, you might think, but that's not always how technology works. And so we always stated upfront to let you know that that information, once we have brought it into Peregrin to provide it to users, to make it even more useful, it doesn't for any reason become ours. We don't have any control over it. So it is still the ownership of the city of Durham, and that has real implications for the privacy and security. So we take the stewardship of that information really seriously. That information is stored in industry-best standards. We obviously are compliant with basic CGIS standards. For those of you who aren't familiar, CGIS is a standard put out by the FBI that must be followed by any technology company and as well as any department that is touching criminal history data, as well as a number of other standards that are industry-best standards for encrypting data, securing data, and make sure that any data that is being entrusted to Peregrin is protected. That also means that that information will never be shared with anyone outside of Durham unless we are given written, explicit direction to do so. And you might ask, why would we get written permission to do so? Well, so some of our departments do decide to take advantage of data sharing with other certified law enforcement agencies, no one outside of law enforcement, because again, there are these CGIS requirements that apply no matter what. But, you know, you have other departments nearby. And if there wants to be, you know, if two departments want to collaborate on solving crime, on addressing issues in their community, Peregrin can enable that data sharing. So that is the only time in which data would be shared is if we have been explicitly asked by the city of Durham to enable that data sharing. And still, the city would have total control of that information, what's getting shared, what's not getting shared. And again, other than that, you know, Peregrin will make sure that information is well taken care of, again, whether in a sharing capacity or while, you know, just serving the needs of Durham. So I hope that answers your question, Chief. I'm not sure if there's anything else you want me to address on that front, but happy to go further.
Yes, so I think that's been one of the biggest concerns is who has access to the information? We have a question. Mary Ross, welcome.
Yeah, just to go back, I think, so this contract already exists.
No, ma'am.
Okay, it sounds like it's already a done deal.
No, it's not. It's not a done deal. This is a part of, it initially went before council in a work session for consideration. And it was a multi-year contract with Peregrin, about $517,000 to be paid, $172,500 FY26, and then the same amount for the next three years. So the council asked that, you know, we go back and maybe just have some more input from our community before moving forward in the cycle for approval or consideration to be approved. So this is not, this is not a done deal. You know, I think that is very important to note. Your input is very important to the decision-making for us, but also for council as well. Okay, so I see, so it sounds like the contract with Peregrin has already been signed. Was there an opportunity for community input before this? So just echoing, just following up, the contract has not been signed. There has been no signing of any contract. So essentially, and maybe TS can help me out with this. So the process by which contracts for consideration for any software, how does that kind of go and be, how is that brought forth to council for consideration?
So I will start, and our PMO manager is on the call as well. So if I miss anything, Mitch, feel free to chime in. So essentially, what happens is there's a process called IT Governance Process where a request is made from a department that needs additional funds. What we do is we go through a vetting process where we make sure that all the pain points that initiated the request are addressed with any potential solutions that are available. Once we vet those solutions, and we make sure that it goes through a cybersecurity review, and also our risk management team from the Finance Department also recognizes that we have, I guess, insurance in place in the event of their cybersecurity rogue employees or plethora of things that can happen with software. Once that's all vetted, we then work with the vendor to negotiate agreements in terms of the contract. We work with the city attorney's office to make sure that the verbiage is correct and that the indemnification clauses and everything checks off. We then are continuously in concert, working in concert with the actual requesting department to make sure that all the needs are being addressed within that agreement. And then it goes through the process where we submit it up as a agenda item based upon the dollar amount. It will determine whether it goes straight to the city manager for approval or whether it actually goes to city council. And then it goes through a general review. We actually made it to the work session where city council had some questions, because the community also had some questions which initiated this town hall that we're now having. So the next step in this process depends on the feedback that the community provides city council. So city council is then able to make the decision on whether they want to vote this up or down, if it makes it that far. And after that, the contract will be approved in which city council gives the approval for the city manager to execute that contract. And from that point in time, once that contract is fully signed off by both the vendor and the city manager's office, attest by the city clerk, signed off by the CFO, then we actually work with the vendor to implement that agreement.
You covered all the steps, Twitter.
That was good. And, you know, just so that, I just, you know, we are not the only agency that uses, that does utilize Peregrin for the work around Real-Time Crime Center. So agencies here locally in the region, but also nationwide, there are agencies that do utilize Peregrin and have had to go through the same process. So I think we have some questions in the chat.
Yeah, Chief, can I address Alex's second question here?
Yes.
Because I think it's a really good one. So will Peregrin be able to sell information with any partner organizations like ICE? Yeah, Alex, really understand the concern, especially given the environment we're in today. To be very clear, the reason I start with all of that data belongs to Durham and will perpetually belong to Durham. We have no ability, no right, no legal capability to do anything with that data other than serve Durham. So we will not sell that data. We will not provide access to that data, certainly not to ICE, any federal government agency. Certainly no selling of that information, no access to that information, again, unless specifically instructed in writing to do so by DPD. We in general don't sell any data. We don't buy data. And totally understand the question, given, you know, given the environment. So I just want to be really clear and happy to answer any follow-ups on that before we jump to anything else, because I think it's a really important issue to be clear on.
Yeah, and Tim, if I could add, just to piggyback on what you said, again, definitely great question around the ICE connection, HSI connection. So the information that the Durham Police Department currently gathers and currently has, there is no information that we have that's going into Peregrin, right? That is, that is anything that ICE would have interest in. Meaning, we do not ask any reporting party, whether you're reporting in a traffic crash or you're reporting as a victim or as a witness or an involved other, or even as a suspect. We do not even ask what your immigration status is, because for us, it makes no never mind in how we go about investigating our cases. If you're a victim, you are a victim. You know, and, and I think that we just really need to make sure that, that, that's, that's heard, because it's important. It's important to the way that we do our work. It's important to ensuring that our community trusts that, that when we write a report, we are not going to ever ask you what your immigration status is, because that quite frankly does, is not going to have any effect on how we investigate any of our cases. You are a member of our community, and that's it. Now, I, I will say that there's a lot of very public information out there that, that provides a lot of information about people that are just in the, are just a system anyway, whether you've gotten stopped for a traffic ticket, a speeding ticket, or you are going to court for either a civil or criminal process. And many of you may be familiar with the E Courts portal. E Courts can provide you a lot of information about anyone out there that might potentially be, have received a ticket. So I say all that to say that that, there's a, there's enough publicly available data that is currently at all of our fingertips that can be utilized in much, in a way that would, that would be, that would be easier than seeking a judge that would be so moved to sign a court order for us to hand over records that quite frankly would not be benefit to, to anyone within HSI that will be housed within Peregrin.
The next set of questions, I think, are mostly for the Durham team, I think, about meetings being added and competitors considered.
Yes, yeah, so, so we'll, we'll talk about, let's see here, we'll, we'll talk about, so the meetings, so meetings were added. We, so they were added, they were sent, the city did add them to, I'm not sure if their website homepage, but I know that they were added through social media. We will also create a real time, if you all are familiar, when we did the ShotSpotter pilot, we actually created a standalone platform for that. And as a matter of fact, it looks like one of my media folks' team just dropped in the chat the link to the Real Time Crime Center. So great work, y'all, getting that done. So similar to the work that we did around ShotSpotter, everything related to ShotSpotter was dropped on that platform, contracts, you know, statistics, outcomes, everything related to ShotSpotter was, was placed there. We are going to do the exact same thing for the Real Time Crime Center, so that you will have information when we have the information. There was some questions last night around, you know, will you publish, or will you make available who is requesting information from the police department through Real Time Crime Center? As long as our legal team says that we can do that, yes, absolutely, we will do that. You know, I will, I will tell you that the only individuals that can request for information will be law enforcement agencies. And I say request, because they are not going to be given carte blanche access to the information. It's much like the same processes that we do now. We work with a number of law enforcement agencies on criminal investigations. So in order for a law enforcement agency to receive information about any of our cases, there has to be some sort of connection to a case that they're working. So we work with Raleigh Police Department on violent crimes that typically, unfortunately, we share suspects on, right? So we work with them on connecting these cases. So in, in, that's how we would work with them in, in that way. Public records requests, how long do they typically take? Well, it depends on the scope of the request. Once a public records request is filed, my staff will prioritize that records request. The, then we'll look to see what information, if the information you are requesting actually does fall under FOIA and public records law. And then once we do that, we will prioritize. So if what you're asking for is a list of crimes, violent crimes that occurred between, you know, a, a set of dates, well, we also have that publicly available on our platform. The Durham Police Department has one of the most transparent platforms with crime reporting, with personnel data from our professional standards, with traffic stop data. All of those things are readily available right now on the Durham Police Department's webpage. So we may direct you there for those requests that fault, that you could actually research on your own. Everything else, we will, will contact you and work with you and give you a timeline on how long it will take to complete those, the specific requests that you're asking for. And contract renewals, so, okay, so were competitors considered? Yes. And actually, Mr. Raven, do you mind talking about, or Mitch, can you talk about the competitors and where they fell kind of in that process?
Sure, yeah, we, we definitely evaluated several other competitors. Ultimately, Peregrin was the best fit, both from a cost standpoint, they were the lowest responsible bidder for, for this. But we looked at some competitors such as Force Metrics, there was a C3 AI option, and then the last one, and this is, this is all on the business case, which is available, this one called CaseWare. But again, Peregrin offered unrivaled ability and also the best cost to the city ultimately. For the contract renewals, again, this, this proposed contract was for three years, and it was at a rate of $172,500 per year, totals at 517.5 for the three years. Beyond that, standard software agreements are discussed at that time to get the best possible cost and, you know, keep us moving forward.
Perfect, thank you. And then there's a question here, it says there is concern with this company's connection to Palantir. Can you talk about this more? Absolutely, thanks for that question, Amanda. Tim, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Amanda, definitely understand the concern. The, the simple answer is that Peregrin has no connection to Palantir. We have no corporate connection, no relationship, we do not work together, there is no kind of relationship between the two companies. The connection that does exist is that one of our two co-founders previously worked at Palantir, and that's basically the extent of the connection. And, you know, I think just to go back to a conversation last night, I think some people raised concerns, well, hey, he came from Palantir, like, you know, shouldn't that raise concerns? I think, you know, what I would say is, just to share, you know, a little bit of, you know, his story, you know, he came to, he, he started Peregrin specifically because he wanted to start a company that could do what Palantir couldn't. He wanted to start a company along with his co-founder that could serve local government, that could solve hard problems for local government, such as solving crimes, such as responding more quickly, all the things I've talked about. But, and that takes a couple of things. One, it requires building a business and a product that can be sold at a cost to a local government, that's a really key piece of this. It requires building a product and a way of delivering that product that actually solves those problems, which are really hard to solve. And third, it requires doing that in the public eye. So we were not founded, working with the federal government, working with three-letter agencies. We were founded in a police department in Northern California. And every organization that we work with, local and state government, we have to go through a vetting process, where we have to publicly share exactly what we do and what we don't do, such as what we're doing here today. We have to put out documents, like the one we've put out, that explains and answers your questions. We put on our website exactly what we do every day. We share those stories, and those are just not things that companies that, you know, work with the federal government, especially in the, in the intelligence and, and defense space, need to do. And so we're a company that was kind of, has grown up, was, was raised in and born and grown up in the space where everything we do has to get vetted by local governments, local city councils, county supervisors, who get to ask the hard questions and make sure that we're doing what we say we're doing. And so we're really proud of, of being a company that came up in that way, and I think that, that sets us apart from a lot of other companies, Palantir, and as well as others. And, and so, yeah, Alex, just to jump to your question there, are there other PDs in North Carolina that have used Peregrin? Yeah, so Durham, if moving forward, would be our third customer here in North Carolina. Cary, as well as Raleigh, are current customers.
Great questions, Alex, thank you for that. All right, so, you know, there was, so again, I'll throw another lob. Oh, great, Amanda, okay, I'm gonna stop talking. Amanda?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna try to say this as nicely as I can. And so I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, this conversation, right? In regards to trying to invest in this technology. My, my history of policing is that it derived from slave patrol, right? And so with that understanding of that, and in a city like Durham, which is beyond policing, right? And so why are we trying to invest over half a million dollars into increasing surveillance and policing in our city, especially in this time where the social safety nets in this country are being swept away from people? Why are we not thinking about investing in people versus surveillance and trying to criminalize and incarcerate people? I'm just really having a hard time with even the thought of investing in this.
Sure, thank you for that question, so I can, I can answer that question. So I'll first answer it as a, as a, as a police officer first. So what this is not, this is not surveillance technology. So I think there's a lot of misinformation that, that categorizes this as surveillance technology, and that it is not. So, so I'll, I'll, I'll just say that, I want to correct that. I think, well, not think, but I know, I know that you can have both. You can have responsible and caring and empathetic approaches to law enforcement, and you can also have a community where, you know, investments are made in community health and wellness, like Durham does fabulously with our partners over at Community Safety with Hard. I know y'all are very familiar with Director Smith and the work that, you know, we all partnered together to make sure that we are also, we can do both, so both can be done. And, and this, and, and the way that the Durham Police Department has really been responsible in evaluating any type of technology, you know, I, we recognize that there's no, there's not a such thing as a perfect technology, because quite frankly, none of us on this call are perfect. There's no such thing as perfect human be, human beings. But we can recognize the, the evils done in the past, and, and so that we do not repeat those in the, in the future, right? If we don't recognize it, we will, we are going to repeat it. One of the things that I'm, I'm proud of with this department is the way in which we own that. We also teach that in our academies. We, we teach the history of slavery in the South and in the United States. We teach the history of policing as it relates to slavery in the United States. We also teach the history of civil rights, me being the direct descendant of Henry Vickers, who integrated the schools here with the McKissick children in Durham. So I, as a mother and as a, as a child of Durham, and someone who was brought up in the realm of knowing civil rights and the history here in Durham, I'm very proud of that. I'm also very proud to be able to, to have this opportunity to ensure that we are, we are doing both, that we are, we are honoring, you know, our community, but we are also making sure that we don't repeat the past, and we're also creating a pathway where going forward, we will always be able to do both. We will always be able to responsibly create a, a very safe environment, and understanding that the definition of safe is very multifaceted. What I feel is safe is different from what someone else feels is safe, but we're committed to doing that, whatever that looks like. As a, as a mother of, of two beautiful black children, I don't have to say anything more. I've had experiences as a black woman in jurisdictions here, next to Durham, you know, I've, I've had different experiences. So I always take that with me, right? In anything that, that we do, and we create a culture here at the Durham Police Department where we ensure that we are comfortable with having uncomfortable conversations. So I don't know if that answers your questions, not, not sure that, that it does. Alex, I see what you said in the chat, it's surveillance adjacent. I'm, I, I think, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, and we're just gonna have to agree to disagree. I, I deal in just factual and, and what I know about the technology, and I know that what surveillance looks like, and this is not, this is not a surveillance tool, a tool of surveillance.
I had put my hand back, I just had a, a follow-up question to that, and I think with Tim, you had given an example, like you just kind of threw one out there about, I guess there was a homicide or a murder, and, you know, this crime center was used. Can, can you explain more then about how this actually works, like in, in actualities? You're muted.
Thank you, ma'am, apologize. Yes, absolutely, happy to give you a concrete example. And to the chief's point, I mean, I think what's important to note is that Peregrin isn't collecting or recording any information. So there's no sensors, cameras, anything out on the streets that's any, you know, doing any more collecting of information because of Peregrin. Peregrin is only using the information that already exists, and I think that, you know, may be why the chief is pointing out that it's not surveillance in, in the sense, in the traditional sense of the word. Amanda, to reply directly, you know, I, I mean, just, you know, one example, this happened a couple of months ago at a department in a jurisdiction down in Florida, where the fact that, that there'd been an individual that committed a hit and run and, and gravely injured a mother and a daughter, and then took off. The challenge there is they didn't have a license plate, or they, they had a description of the car, but not the license plate. And what happened was, is that this individual was pulled over several hours later for speeding. They, you know, if this person, if that, if the officer who went to knock on the door hadn't had the information that he did, provided by Peregrin, which was data from one system, which was the nine-on-one system that had a description of the car and the person, that had been made available through Peregrin to other officers that otherwise wouldn't have been made available, he couldn't have spotted that person, and instead of giving him a ticket and letting him go, they were able to bring in someone that, you know, permanently injured a mother and a daughter. So that's just one example of the information that would otherwise have sat in a nine-on-one call record and a police record that was still being developed, so wasn't yet in the records management system, was made available to an officer in real time, such that they could spot, hey, this is the perpetrator of this grave crime that hurt a mother and a child, and make sure that that person was taken off the street for the protection of the community. Another example that I referenced earlier was a, a, a young child. And so just to give you exactly what happened there, a young child was found at an intersection, four-year-old child with special needs, that young child could not give their name or where they lived. And so the police were understandably concerned and didn't know where to take this child. One thing that happens in police department systems is not only is the data siloed, it's often very hard to search through it. So you can't simply go in there and say, hey, I'd love to look for, is there any record of anyone in the area who happens to be a four-year-old child that meets this description? That's really hard to do. And so they would have had to take that child in, bring her to Child Services, and wait for someone to call to say, hey, my child, you know, is gone. In this case, instead, they were able to use Peregrin and on the spot, in the, be able to draw a circle around the map and say, hey, we need to know, is there any calls related to a person, a child, meeting this description within 200 yards of this location? And it turned out that just a few weeks before- And it turned out that just a few weeks before, there had been a 911 call where a child meeting that description had been a part of a 911 call. They went to that address, knocked on the door. The mother opened the door and it turns out the child had crawled out the window in the middle of the night and she didn't even know her child was gone. That information was only discovered in that system because Peregrine offered the ability to search and find that data in a heartbeat that allowed that child to be returned within an hour of having crawled out the window of her house. So those are the kind of things that, again, it might be finding a child, it might be solving a crime quickly, but making sure that the information is in the hands of a patrol officer, of a detective in real time, allows you to have a really big impact on the safety of a community that otherwise, you know, again, you know, something the captain was saying last night, you know, some of these things would otherwise could take weeks or months and we can get done in a matter of seconds and really protect lives. Yeah, please. Happy to hear a follow-up question, Amanda, or reaction.
Yeah, no, because I heard you say, like, they gave the description of a car. And so how does that protect the community when they might say the description is a young black male and then that gives the authority to police officers to then think that every black male, young black male that fits that description that they stop is then a suspect in their crime? Help me understand that.
Yeah, so, I mean, in any policing context, they're gonna give out a description of a person. And so before or after Peregrine, you're gonna have, you know, there's gonna be a report that says, hey, the witness said this person looked this way, and they're gonna give out that description and blast out. What's possible with Peregrine is to automatically flag certain characteristics. In this case, it was the characteristics of the car that allowed them to know, like, this is the make and model of that car and to put that on alert such that people, so that it could be spotted more quickly and effectively. And so, you know, I think, like, it's important to note that it's not gonna change the fact that, say, the description of a person or a place or a car would be pushed out to a wider community, but it's gonna get to them faster and give the ability to get the right person. As opposed to, I mean, I think one of the things that I really feel passionately about is Peregrine's about getting precision. And so what will happen sometimes in cases where you don't have that precision is that the wrong person gets picked up because you have some really limited information. Maybe that information is only a part of the whole picture. And so what Peregrine seeks to do is to make sure all the information possible, to make sure you're actually going after the person that's responsible, as opposed to anyone that meets a loose description of that person. And so I think the more information that we, what we found is and what we believe is the more information we can give that's more precise and descriptive, allows you to actually get the person who's really responsible as opposed to having a really broad description that maybe lead to a misidentification. So we believe misidentification is a huge problem and that's one of the reasons we want this information to be in the hands of an officer. And that's why, you know, part of the reason why Durham is considering us because having that information and that precision can make the difference between arresting the right person and the wrong person. Would the police department already have access to their 911 calls in the example you gave about the child? So certainly, the 911 call data is available today, right? There's a 911 system. It's called a computer-aided dispatch. The difference with Peregrine is that usually these computer-aided dispatch systems, what they're built to do well is they're built for a dispatcher who sits in a 911 center to receive a call and to record that information. To say, hey, at this time, I received a call. At this time, I dispatched the police officer. This is what I heard from them. And it's a good system for effectively recording that information. What it's not built for is to effectively search all of that information really quickly and effectively to look for identifiers, such as a young girl of this age meeting these characteristics. And so most departments, the 911 system, although it might be accessible, doesn't allow you to search in that way and find that information quickly. It may take days or weeks. Whereas in Peregrine, you can search and find that information quickly. And so, Amanda, it's a great question because in all the data that we're talking about here, the department already has access to it. That is true of all the data that will come into Peregrine. There will be no more data after Peregrine as there is before. But it's the ability to get access to that data quickly. And again, going back to your earlier concern, making sure we're addressing the right person, finding the right needle in the haystack, as opposed to making the mistake that can come when partial information is all that a department has.
Those are great questions. Okay, are there any more questions? I do see some of our news media on. Did you all have any questions that you wanted to ask about the technology at all? Anyone else on the call? Okay. All right. So obviously, we have several more. So several more sessions. And, you know, our purpose was to make sure that we were able to interact and engage with as many people as possible, as much of our community as possible. Mary, you are very welcome. As much of our community as possible. And that was very important, which is why we had all the dates that we do. So today is our only virtual. Our next upcoming date is Saturday, November the 8th. Thank you, sir. Saturday, November the 8th. Captain Kuscha, I just put that in the chat. At Lion Park from 12 to 2:00. And then we'll pick back up after, next week, on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. All three of those sessions will be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM and at various locations. And then we'll have another session. Looks like Saturday, November the 15th, from 12 to 2:00. So we're hoping with all of those that we can at least capture as many questions and answer as many questions as possible. We will post, we're doing kind of daily summaries. We will post all of those to the Real Time Crime Center, the dashboard. Be sure to click over and capture that link also. While I'm talking, just click over, capture it. So, you know, please check back in regularly. We're gonna post, there's some information, further information about Peregrine and the work that Peregrine does and the police department. Also, please be sure to stay engaged. If you have any questions, you can certainly send us all separate emails. My, you know, feel free to email me and reach out to me or any members of my staff. And we're happy to continue to have the discussion or just come to any one of the remaining meetings that we have. This particular Zoom call will be, we're gonna try and post that on the site so that it can be referred back to at any point in time. I think there's some great nuggets of information coupled with the questions and answer the two sessions we had previously. I think there's gonna be a lot of really good information out there. We want to always be partners. It's okay to agree to disagree. We can have both. And we always, we never want to harm. We always want to help. And so with, having said that, I want to thank everybody. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Even though, wait a minute, hold on, Amanda, I see your comment. Hold on. Even though the community has grave concerns with this technology, is the police department still going to move forward with the contract? So we are still going to move forward with putting the contract in the agenda cycle for council. There will be opportunities for you to, council is going to hopefully be either at some of these listening sessions or you can definitely participate in the public comment when the contract comes open for council consideration during those times. Or you can reach out to your respective council member directly. I tell you that I find a lot, there's value in Peregrine. So I am going to, as a police chief, advocate for this technology to move forward. We have done, we have been very responsible with the selection of Peregrine. We don't take technology lightly. We are very responsible with the work that we do and we value our community. Doesn't always mean that we agree, but we do value the input and the feedback of our community and we put that into everything that we do here. So I thank you all for your time tonight, for joining us, and we'll see you at some of the next sessions. Take care.